Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. Since this is posted as an official city council public work session, we have certain procedures that we have to go through. I have to call the meeting to order, we have to take roll, et cetera, so we have to follow those procedures. So, I will start. Madam Clerk, if you would like to, are you going to come up here, or how are you going to do that? Okay, I have present from the City Council is Councilman Welper, Councilman Cole, Councilman Lynn, Councilman Morrissey, Councilman Schmidt. I don't see any other councilmen here right now. I do need a motion from somebody to kick this. All in favor, please say aye. Pose same sign. Okay, we have an agenda, and our agenda is, thank you to David Unmok and Tony Shertler for spending an afternoon with us here in Waterloo. A few weeks ago, these two gentlemen made a presentation to the Iowa League of Cities Leadership Conference. I didn't get an opportunity to go to that particular presentation, but Michelle Whedon did, and was very impressed with you guys, Tony, and brought the information back to us, and together, Michelle and I decided that it would be a fabulous opportunity for us if we could get these guys down to Waterloo to explain to us, all of us, some tips, pointers, whatever, on economic incentives as it relates to city government. I'm assuming there's going to be a, this is Tony, that's David back there. I'm assuming there'll be a time at the end for questions, and I encourage everybody to ask questions at the end, if you have any. For your two knowledge, if, City Council are all right here, this is the City Council, we have several city employees, if you're a city employee, just raise your hand, would you please? So, there are city employees here, the rest are business people, and just citizens who are interested in how the city does business. Tony, thanks.
I turned, we had a little double speak there, so I turned my mic off, and I tried to turn it back on. Can you hear me? Can the mic, you can hear me? Okay. I talk pretty good this way, and I'm not a podium speaker, and so standing behind the podium isn't effective for my presentation. So, my name is Dave Unmok, and I want to thank the mayor, and thank Michelle for inviting us back. Tony and I were in front of about 50 city officials on April 11th, 2015, in Des Moines at the Holiday Inn, just off 235, as you know where that is. It was the second year in a row that we were asked to come and speak. Year ago was on a little different subject. This year, it was about economic development and strategic planning, and the mix and the blend of those. And the presentation there was split roughly 50/50. I opened it up and did my thing, and then Tony opened it up and did his thing, and then there was good Q&amp;A, and then we were, you know, we were finished. In the conversations with the city officials from Waterloo, the nature of this presentation has shifted. So, it's maybe 20, 25, me, more 75, 80, Tony, because there's specific things that he can deliver on his skill set that I don't have. And so, we are actually very complementary, but very different. And so, we really appreciate the opportunity. I have about four, five, or six pieces, and I want to set it up. So, really, what I'm doing is kind of setting Tony up. You want to go to the next piece, because I'm going to just move around. So, first of all, sometimes this works, and sometimes it doesn't, but I never miss the opportunity to do it if it works, but, yes, sir?
Is that mic on? We're getting a feedback back here still.
Okay. I wouldn't even know how to turn it off, if it is on. Is that off, Tom? Does that help?
We're getting feedback.
Well, I appreciate you saying something, yeah. All right, let's give it a try. So, here's my setup. So, I'm from Dubuque, Iowa. So, I've been born and raised in Dubuque, Iowa, and I went to Wortburg College in Waverly, Iowa. And so, we're driving down 63, and I get to the north part of Bremers, just south of New Hampton. I go, now I'm finally home. You know, I spent a lot of time in that particular community, and I literally have, in my key, I was going to show it kind of a key chain, so I stay connected to that community to this day. I went to Drake University in 1981 and '82, and got my master's degree in public administration. And it was fate, luck, or what have you, that moved me up to the Twin Cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul. And so, 31 years, I've been in Minneapolis and St. Paul, and my career, to help put context to this, has been in local government. I've been a professional city administrator, county administrator, and now a consultant. So, I was a city manager, a county administrator, and now a consultant for six years. So, 31 years doing local government professional management. And what I do now is advise local governments on various aspects of how to run better. So, when I left Scott County, Minnesota, and if you go up north at all, Scott County is on the west side of 35W in Burnsville and Lakeville, things you may know about Scott County are the casino, the Renaissance Festival, Valley Fair, there was a park raceway there, so that's been kind of my professional home for many years. It's been really a neat place to work and a neat place to live. When I moved there in 1983, from Des Moines, it was 55,000, and when I left Scott County to work for Springstead, which is technically in St. Paul, there was about 130,000 people. So, it's been a dramatic change and improvement in that particular community. My message today is, in order to deliver effective economic development, you really have to know what it is, where you're going, and what you mean by it. And so, in a span of a few minutes, I'm going to try to explain what I do when I coach, advise, consult, and teach cities and counties about economic development. But first, this thing called premier. One of the topics that we talked to the city officials about was best practices. What are best practices? His expertise is focused on economic development. My expertise is focused on the organization. And so, about a year and a half ago, after doing a lot of kind of goal-setting work, strategic planning work with many cities, from very large, much larger than Waterloo, to Waterloo size, to much smaller than Waterloo, I was asked by a city council member one time to say, "Dave, what happens in a local government that makes it work? How would you define best practices in kind of a local government, not just management, but administration, and even kind of the political landscape of local government?" And after a lot of reflection, I came up with five bullet points. And of course, what we're going to focus on today is bullet point number one, and topic economic development. But to set it up, I wanted to leave, just in a matter of a few minutes, some reflections to city officials, city staff, the mayor, his team, and citizens about how you can determine or define if you think your local government is operating in a premier or best-practice manner. And so, this is subjective, and it's a Dave Unmok presentation, if you will. You won't find this kind of in a textbook, but these are the principles I use when I get asked by a city or a county to walk in their organization and tell us, "How we doing? How we doing?" And I can ask some simple questions, and some simple constructs, and after a short period of time, walk out interviewing some people, and have a pretty good feel for what's happening inside that organization. Five things. You plan well. Effective organizations plan well. Two, you understand roles and expectations, they're clearly defined. The most dysfunctional organizations, to a degree, here or here, are typically defined by those that don't understand what they're doing and who's doing it. And to be fair, an elected official tries to manage the city, and the city staff try to make policy. I mean, that's a very simplistic point. It's a very simplistic point, but that's what I mean by roles. The differentiation of responsibility and assignments. The best cities and the best counties and the best public sector organizations, school district alike, have clear roles and expectations. Three, you try to run better. I mean, three has a lot of big words, but the point of number three is you try to be efficient and effective. And there's a difference. For those that work in local government every day, with all shapes and sizes, and all kinds of people, I see it all the time. I see the city council member, or the city manager, who says, "We want to be efficient," or "We want to be more effective." And in the same breath, I see that same person say, "But I'm not going to invest in myself. I'm not going to spend a nickel to be more effective, because I want to spend my money someplace else." Now, that is a policy choice, that's inherently in their right, but the most effective, the most premier organizations are willing to invest in themselves to be better at what they do. And we all know, the city of Waterloo is a big public sector business. It's a business, it's a public business, it's not a private business, it's not a profit-driven business, but it's a big business. Four, you communicate well. I mean, that's so simplistic. It's almost so obvious, you know, both internally and externally. Communication, the most effective, is this way, this way, and all kinds of different ways. But not only do you focus on the citizen, the business, the service club, the other school, you know, whatever else, but you focus on it internally. You communicate well inside your organization. And finally, five, you know, you share common values, you work to seek consensus. It is a healthy environment when you disagree about policy. In economic development, that seems to be the case. It's okay. But what you do is you work to seek consensus, to find what's right for your community, and what's right for your city, and then even if you lose the vote, you get on board, or even if you win the vote, you make sure that you draw on the people that don't support that. The healthiest organizations, the most successful organizations, that are competing against you for economic development and for other things, if they share common values and consensus, are going to be better off. They will be. Because the competition for limited dollars, the competition for jobs, the competition for private sector investment is very strong, and much of it mobile. And that's what he can get into, much of it mobile. So, if they can decide if they want to do Waterloo, or Cedar Falls, or Waverly, or Des Moines, or Cedar Rapids, or wherever it's going to be, those people who want to invest in your community are watching your community, they're watching council meetings, they're reading the newspaper, they're looking at blogs, they're looking at all the comments and conversation that's going on in the community. Leadership must work to build consensus. The most premier organizations, the ones that have the best practice, do this well. It's a classic Minnesota Iron Range example. And I'm a German Lutheran, from Dubuque, Iowa, and I'm about as opposite of an Iron Range as you can be, but in the Iron Range in Minnesota, the classic stories are, they fight, they scrap, they beat each other up, they yell, they scream, they argue, and then they go have a beer. And then they go to the bar, and they have a beer, and they do it again the next day. There's an old cartoon, when I was a kid, the Bugs Bunny cartoon, and you'll see comics here in a second, where it's, I think it's Wile E. Coyote, and it's the, I don't know who it is anymore, I don't want, they're chasing each other, trying to kill, the sheep and the wolf. The sheep and the wolf are battling, battling, battling all day, and they get smashed up, and the end of the cartoon is they're punching out. They say, "Well, see you tomorrow, Ralph." You know, "See you tomorrow, Jack." You know, they're punching out, and that's the end of the cartoon. It's the same concept. It's, you can scrap, and you can argue, and you can debate and disagree, but at the end of the day, this is the city of Waterloo, and it's all about your future. The setup. So, this was designed just to introduce some principles of how you can think about your community, how you can evaluate your community, kind of on an equal playing field with others. That's my purpose. Next one. So, I'm going to grab my water. So, what you have here is you have, I think I have three of them. And so, I used to deliver the Des Moines Register when I was a kid, Route 104. And I don't know, think the Des Moines Register is delivered anymore in Dubuque, you have to go buy it at a Hy-Vee or something like that. My route was 104, Carter Road, and I'd get home after delivering the papers, and I'd read the paper, and I read, read the comics, all the time. And so, to this day, I still read comics. I get, you know, two papers, two large papers in our community, Minneapolis Star Tribune and the St. Paul Pioneer's Disbrats. There's only about two or three comics in those two daily papers, large daily papers that are the same, and the rest are different. This is a comic. So, I have three that are all related to strategic planning, correlation of economic development. This was just in the paper the other day, and this gentleman right here, raise your hand, saw it, and he goes, "I just cut that one out as well." Yeah. So, one of my council members that I respected the most when I was the city manager in Prior Lake, he was a businessman, and we were having a little retreat one day, and I was a young manager in my twenties, just, you know, kind of fresh out of graduate school, and he was reading the paper, and we got up in the morning, and I got up in the morning, and his name was Doug, and I said, "Doug, what, you know, what do you read? What do you do?" I was kind of trying to impress me, I thought he'd say, "Well, I read the business page first, you know, then I read the editorial page," or whatever. He says, "No, I read the comics first every day, that's the best part of the paper." I never forgot it. This one looks abstract and pretty odd, in all likelihood, but what it is, it's a metaphor. And in this particular case, what you have, who reads this comic? Does any, is it a pretty foreign? It probably is. So, it's going to look a little weird to you, but suffice it to say, it's about three or four animals. Stephen Pastus writes it, he's out of California, and he's an interesting man to follow. It's, there's a lot of, not metaphors, but sarcasm and oddity humor. There's a rat, there's a pig, there's a goat, there's zebras, and there's an alligator, and they all have personalities. Well, the purpose in life for the zebra is, one is they don't talk English very well, but they're always trying to hunt down the zebras to kill them and eat them, and they never succeed. So, there's abject failure in this comic all the time. And the woman on the left is the spouse, and she always has a bushy red hair, when it's color, and the person on the right is Larry, and the alligators are always named Larry, and there's been all kinds of them that have died over the years, and so Pastus writes in some of his books, I don't know how many Larrys I've killed off, but it's been pretty plenty. So, Larry's sitting around, he's lazy, and all he wants to do is drink beer. The wife comes, "What are you doing, Larry? Me hunting prey. You're sitting in a lawn chair drinking beer, and me in planning phase, and what you don't see is her kicking over the chair over into the bush." No one respect planning phase. Think about that. No one respect the planning phase. That is a fundamental principle of local government and local government dynamics, is the respect that needs to be provided to the planning phase of what you do, not just in economic development, but in all that you do. And I do this kind of thing for a living. I work with communities of all shapes and sizes, and it's really difficult to get people to embrace the value and the effectiveness of planning. Why? Because they've tried it, they've done it, it's not worked, they've been there, done that, we don't have time for it, we don't need it. Economic development of all topics, and that's where I go here towards my close, is there's no more topic of all with limited resources, you know, politically charged conversations, investments that can be seen coming out of the ground, or money that's spent that needs good, healthy planning. Next one, Tony. Economic development, so strategic planning. So, what I do, and Tony and I are partners when we do this, we've done city of Woodbury, which is about 70,000 people, we've done, help me, Washington County, which is where Woodbury is in, which is a couple hundred thousand people, a couple other smaller counties, and we're tandem, because I bring the overarching process management, and he brings the economic development skills. And one of the things that we talk about is there are at least kind of seven key principles to economic development strategic planning. And I won't go through bullet by bullet to save time, because they're pretty obvious. But the definition of what economic development means for Cedar Falls is not the same as Waterloo. The definition of what economic development means for Decorah isn't the same as for Waverly. You know, so it's really important to understand, what do we mean when we say economic development? And I don't know the four of you, but I bet you, if you would ask you, 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 and you to define economic development in your words, it would be different, unless you have a comprehensive consensus-based economic development strategic plan. So, we have a nice crowd here today, people are coming in the back, so if there's 60 people here, I bet if we'd pull each other, you'd say different things. Now, there's some commonalities that I'm going to share with you in a second, but these are the kinds of things that are really important. Note how in the middle, we talks about defining your role, which goes back to the connection to the premier, the best practices in city government. The second, you know, one of the things that Tony and I did, we got here early, we drove around. I go through Waterloo a bunch to get to Iowa City for sporting events and stuff like that, but I don't spend a lot of time in Waterloo anymore, so we drove around. We drove around downtown, drove around the community, made some kind of initial observations, and he printed and looked up some of the data and demographics in this particular county, Blackhawk, and around the community area, is you've got to understand the data and drivers of what is your community, and Tony will talk more about that. But these are kind of, they look kind of logical and sequential, they're really not, they're kind of all that come together at one time, and in all likelihood, you may do this well, I don't know. So, you may be already doing some of this stuff. Next one. Remind me next time to bring someone who knows how to use a thing, you know? Tony's sole job is to help me get through my presentation to get to his, and so he can't do it very well.
Wait till you're running.
Yeah, I'm not going to run it, I'm going to give it to somebody else. I'm going to have to leave to go to another meeting when I. So, here's cartoon number two. I hope that I'm going to resonate with a little more than some people on the far side. Okay, so there's a lot of more head noggins on the far side. The tragedy of the far side is that Gary Larson quit doing comics a number of years ago, he retired. And now, they have the far side volume out of many of his comics. He was fabulous in bringing animals to life, not together, not all that much different than Pearls Before Swine, but he did farm animals and weird people, and if you take nothing from my piece, Google far side, and just spend some time looking at some of the great comics that he has. But this is really a good metaphor for strategic planning and for planning in general. You're damned if you do, or damned if you don't. You're damned if you do, because once you leap into it, you've got to finish it, and you've got to finish strong. That's going to be, you'll see, my last comic is about intention and execution. If you just kind of tepidly get into it, you're going to be disappointed in this outcome. But if you don't do it, I argue, and I advocate for, you will not be as successful as you could be. Yeah, you may do just fine, you may have some wins, but you could have been better. Folks, you could have been better. So, you're kind of damned, damned if you do, or damned if you don't. And so, in time, I think about this. So, is bad process better than no process? And I think the answer is depends on who it is. It really depends on who, because bad process may not lead you to where you want to go, but it's certainly better than no process. But if bad process is a prejudice for future inaction, or that leads to poor results, then bad process isn't good either. A great comic, far side. Tony. No more humor now. We're in panic mode right now. Thank you very much for coming, everybody.
We'll be at the press call tomorrow night. I think I got complete system failure.
Oh. Now I know for sure I'm not running. There's a great comic at far side that has, I think there's so many good ones, but one of the classic ones, this is typical Gary Larson, is there's two or three panels, there's the one where the panel, where you go, there's a car driving by a field, and there's cows in the field grazing, and then the next comic, or the last panel of this particular comic, is the cars have driven by, and the cows are standing on leaning up against the fence smoking cigarettes. You know, that's the kind of humor that he has.
We had planned to put a visual system, just haven't gotten to it.
That's fine. I can't, well, it doesn't.
Do you want to speak off your notes?
Well, I mean, it doesn't do much good without the benefit of looking it up, so I only have three more, and then I'm done. My next one is about economic development outcomes, related, it's corollary to the strategic planning steps, it's just, what are typical outcomes you see in a planning process?
You guys thought Michelle was going to fix it? I think she just left.
Yeah, she did. Here comes a team of experts, by the way. Here they come. She's left because you're going to have to show up in the mayor's office tomorrow. They're working a movie theater production crew back there. Can they just run it from back there, and then we'll just? All right. Thank you. Economic development roles, sorry about that, folks. Yeah, that's fine, there's a couple. Could you go back one? There it is, outcomes, roles is, so here's outcomes. You know, so what do communities have in common when it comes to economic development principles and practices? You know, these are pretty common things you see in almost any community, small, medium, and large, and job growth, tax base growth, retain, retention's always equal to attraction, invest money wisely strategically. The middle one is really interesting, because that's one we see more and more now than ever before, is the definition of the role of a city, especially as large as Waterloo, versus, say, if you have a conglomeration of a bunch of cities in a larger county, or if you have, you know, one large city in a conglomeration of smaller cities in a smaller county, is really, what's the principle?
I didn't touch it.
What's that?
It's like a change, and you just have to hold it.
I will, yeah, there you go. Stay there, I'm almost done.
All right, I got control of it.
You do?
Yeah.
That scares me, by the way. You know, one more mistake, and you're walking home, Tony. All right, but the fourth one is really, actually, a key one, and it maybe is less important in this community because of, there's no, well, Cedar Falls might be a really good question for you, but in some places, it's much more important, is to add value. It's not to duplicate or complicate, but to add value. Next one. No, you, you.
No, that's it, that's excellent.
No, that one. Go one more. There you go. All right. Yeah, all right. Roles. Again, tied back to my premier piece, again, for the sake of time, I'll go quick, is, you know, what are the specific roles you want, the leadership, the council? What's their role, the mayor and the council? What's the staff's role? What's the community's role? What's the business role? The bankers' role? You know, the service club's role, if any? The chamber, an economic development corporation, an industrial development corporation, nonprofit agencies. A clearly defined role and support team is really important in a good economic development strategy. And then rules and regulations, and you see a thing called scale in parentheses, it has probably no context to you, but real quickly, where I was from, Scott County, Minnesota, Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency, lots of history and background there, but suffice it to say that, over the course of the past few years, they created an economic development vision that says, no matter where a job is created, or no matter where a tax base has grown in our county, it's good for our county. So, it's basically an unofficial, informal pact that they will not compete against each other for jobs, because a job in New Market Elko along 35, when you're driving up the freeway, is just as good as a job in Shakopee, Minnesota, in that county, in that community. So, they have an acronym, an organization called SCALE, and they've stretched far beyond imagination for less competition between themselves and more strength universally. And then finally, and I know this isn't the topic for today per se, but one of the questions that we always ask in this conversation is, what are your rules and regulations, what are your development standards like? What are your zoning patterns like? What are your subdivision ordinance like? And oftentimes, we kind of overlook that, because the high-profile things like economic development subsidies, and TIF, and tax abatement, they get all the headlines. That's where all the charge is in economic development, but the reality is, the hard work is done at this level with zoning and subdivision, and development standards, and the like. A good, healthy economic development role is to understand, where do they fit in Waterloo, Iowa? How do they impact and influence what we're trying to do to grow our community here? I'm almost done. Dilbert. Dilbert readers, Dilbert readers, a handful here, a little more than, yeah, Dilbert is, it's an office worker in an engineering company of no name and no understanding. This is a great one. I'm thinking of getting into the strategic planning game. You can read it, right? If I understand the job description, you hallucinate about the future, and then something different happens, and finally, you have to pretend it's useful, and he says, "That really sounds hard." You know, and that's a great conversation about strategic planning. And finally, I am not going to do that, I promise.
No, I'll do it.
I have one more. Two more, but really, very quick. You can stop there. Stop there. So, this is an interesting comic, and I'm done with comics, but I literally call it a quirk, call it a curiosity, call it a desire, as a complete aside, and I know you've known me for a half hour, one of my goals is to develop a presentation on local government, not just strategic planning, using strictly comics. Strictly comics. And so, I scour the newspaper every day for things related to what you do in local government that are all comic-based, and so some of these will have value at some point in time. But this one has a much broader value than just. value than just strategic planning and economic development, but it's so true, because the best of intentions are so different than the best of execution. In an economic development, if you're a citizen that isn't here, and you don't understand TIF, you've never heard of tax abatement, you read the paper, you watch KWWL, and you see controversy, disagreement, charge, a lot of people at a meeting, what you want to know is, are we, how's our city doing? Everybody has great intentions in that room, you have differences of opinion about what to do, but what's the execution? You know, do, what's, what's the data? What's the execution? Are there cranes in our downtown? Or are there new buildings going up? Or are my shopping patterns going to be different? Do I have a new grocery store? And all of those questions, that's what a citizen wants to know, is they're not interested in the complex debate. They don't understand any of that. And they want you to work together to figure it out, to grow your community, because they see it happening all around them. We'll skip that. Go back to the cartoon.
This is, this is like the Google card.
There. Oh, we've done that one already. Oh, back the other way, the other way. There! Keep it. Finally. You see, Department of Government Transparency. The guy walks in with his red coat, next, 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 next. And he's walking out and no one waits on him. Not a person waited on him, you know? So the intention of the office was good, but the execution of the office was not. So thanks for, thanks for my piece and for the, the gaps there. Again, my point was to set it up with some observations about kind of the universality of, of, of what local governments do related to some key principles of economic development, both in the planning side, the outcome side, and the role side, just as context to the details that Tony can provide in the discussion you're going to have today about the role of incentives, the use of incentives, and economic development in a more specific sense. So thank you very much, and are you going to stay there?
I'm going to stay here.
All right, I'll turn this off.
Excellent, excellent. I, my name is Tony Shertler, and I'm a practitioner of economic development, and I'm just going to take advantage of the mix-up here, because as a practitioner or frontline guy in economic development, we're always counting on the guys like Dave Unmack to organize our clients, the council, the community, to affect good economic development. So that communication and rolling out the details matters in this business. So as you can see, we got a little bit of a befuddle there with the, with the technology. Dave and I are kind of opposites in a certain way. I grew up in Washington DC. I've been doing economic development now for about 21 years, 15 years for the city of St. Paul, downtown urban development. St. Paul's a little bit like Waterloo, and we got a river that splits it in half, kind of a rust belt city that's, you know, the glacier of, they always call the glacier of industrial revolution sort of receded on some things. We got a lot of underutilized land, but we're about 290,000 people, and we're also in the middle of a big, you know, it's a lava-hot metropolitan region. The Minneapolis-St. Paul, MSA, is one of the highest performing regions in the country. St. Paul tends to be sort of the blue collar, poor sister to Minneapolis in a lot of respects. We don't like to admit that there, but we're always kept, playing catch-up to the high-tech guys on the other side of the river. It's a glass tower. I mean, literally, east and west of the United States splits right there. If you go to downtown St. Paul, it's all brick, old, in turn-of-the-century warehouse. You go to Minneapolis, it's glass tower, high-tech, you know, it's, it's a very different culture. At any rate, so I've been doing this for about 15 years, eight years at Springstead, and we do this session, I've been doing it at Government Finance Officers Association, League of Cities Conferences around the country, and it's really kind of a dovetail of, you can fixate on the tools of economic development incentives, but they mean nothing without context of what you're trying to do. So what I'm, I'm going to shoot through here is just kind of a quick overview. I'm going to plow through this really quick. It's about 20 slides. I'm not going to go as long as Dave did, because I'm going to try and keep it simple to open it up to questions. But essentially, the perspective I'm bringing to this, now that I'm a consultant on the outside, is sort of a financial perspective, quantitative as opposed to qualitative issues, because as staff person trying to implement your community's goals, I've got to give you objective professional recommendations and information back to make good policy decisions. So I'm always looking for, what is, what's driving the community? What's making them make the decisions they want? What are they trying to do? So that's what this is an attempt to do. And as Dave said earlier, economic development means different things to a lot of people. So I'm going to take a little literary license here, and I'm going to elbow out other things I don't want to talk about. And so I'm going to disclose right up front that this is a, this is a thread of economic development activity. It's not intended to be an end-all, be-all. It's not a silver bullet. It's one approach, and it's meant not to diminish anybody else's approach. The first thing is, local governments are judged. There are people out there measuring you, whether you're a good or bad, or healthy or unhealthy community. And one of them are the rating agencies, Standard and Poor's and Moody's. And so those are the guys out there telling you what your debt's worth, if it's risky or not risky. They have an opinion in that, they're broadcasting that in the world, because somebody who's going to buy your debt wants to know how risky it is. And they do that. What they find in economic development, the local government doesn't make the economy. Communities are followers. Private sector makes the economy. I mean, it's those investments that create jobs and everything else. Local government's trying to keep the environment working around it. But what they've identified is economic development doesn't follow under economy. Economy is if you have John Deere in your community, or big corporations in your community, those sort of environmental issues. What they say is economic development strategies fall under management, which is why when Dave Unmack gives his speech and talks about that, that's critical. Where are you going? How are you going to manage these resources? Standard and Poor's puts it even more specifically, right? People are doing economic development. They say, these cities, top 10 ways to maintain your credit rating, number 10, have a well-defined, coordinated economic development strategy. And that's exactly what Dave's talking about. Get a consensus. It's not about TIF as a tool. There are a lot of communities that get TIF, they get tool-fixated. They keep talking about the tool, and they're not talking about it's a means to an ends. What's the ends? Where are you going? And what they're saying is, the question isn't whether there should be a formal program, but rather how significant a resource commitment should be made to this effort. And, and the reason TIF becomes so controversial is because it's a value-add tool. It doesn't happen unless the investment occurs. And so a lot of people are thinking about, well, how do I budget for things that aren't here yet? And we'll get to that in a second. But that's essentially what they're asking you. What, you know, what's enough? What's too much? What's not enough? How are you handling these incentives, these, and these tools to grow your community? And are you doing it in a responsible way? And they're judging you. Here's where I'm going to start taking some literary license. We fall this sort of housing and economic development. That's what we call what we do, this consulting business that I do. And I would describe it as direct efforts undertaken by local government to encourage private investment. Okay? So not the zoning. I'm, I'm starting to sort out those other things. Not workforce development, not education. What are the direct infrastructure dollars that you're putting in to grow your community? And they typically fall in housing, because we do affordable housing with tax credits. You guys have George Sherman here. George Sherman's up in Des Moines, he's up in St. Paul, I've dealt with him for years. He's doing, he's an affordable housing guy. He's an expert on getting tax credit access to help build community in your affordable housing. And I'm going to say, there's three flavors of this direct participation. Community development, which is capacity building, I will define it. I'm not saying that's absolute, but I'm choosing it just so I can start to sort out for you where I'm going. In the city of St. Paul, we have a huge Somali community. We have a huge Maong community. A lot of people who didn't know how to access capital, start businesses, navigate the permitting process. What do the health codes say about, you know, why do I have to keep things refrigerated? So we had a lot of direct resources into training and capacity building for new immigrant populations. Housing development, not market rate, there's two kinds here, demands, it would be market rate, demands meant, or needs-based. Now, needs-based is, like I said before, a tax credit project. You're building a box to live in. It costs $100,000 to build that box, but the person who's renting the box can't afford $100,000. So somebody's covering the difference in there. Why? To help that population that can't afford the box. That's basically needs-based. They can't afford it. There's typically two ways that they verify that they're serving the population. They do an income check, they make sure that their wages don't supersede what the mandate is, and they do a rent control, so they have something on the value of the box that says, I can't charge more than Y. And then there's economic development. I'm going to say this is leveraged-based. So this is, increases market value. So this is $1 of public dollars creates $10 of private dollars in my community. So it's leveraged-based. I'm not trying to, it, it's great if I can help a success, successful company. In other words, I'm not just going to give money to people who don't have capacity, or people who can't afford it. I want successful enterprises who are going to grow in my community, and I'm prepared to put a dollar in to get $10 of value. And if they get rich, fantastic, because my community's, the boat's going to float. So I'm going to select that as a economic development. So the visioning process, and again, I do this in communities all over. We're in Wisconsin, Minnesota, Iowa, Kansas, Missouri, Montana, Virginia, North Carolina. And so I'm taking basically my experience of how cities operate and boiling it down into some commonalities that people go, yeah, that's kind of what we're at. So I'm, I'm taking a lot of liberty here, but to try and put some context on it. So generally speaking, community has said, you have identified something in their community, and it, I'm going to say it's real estate-based, because property taxes drive a lot of community value. And you need property tax to pay for police and fire, so the bucket that fills directly in your community is property tax. Some are sales tax, by the way. Kansas and Missouri have a lot of sales tax. So you've, definitely looked at your community and said, there's something going on where real estate values are in flux or declining. There's a functional obsolescence, there's blight or something going on. Or there's a land use in transition. I'm on the Board Planning Commission in St. Paul. Ford plant shut down five years ago. 160 acres of industrial property fallow, in the middle of a high-rent neighborhood, in fact. So we're talking about land use there. It's functionally obsolete. They used to pull stuff out of the ground, sand, to make glass. They used to build Fords there, and now they don't do any of that. They cleared it out, it's in transition, and the city's got a responsibility to rezone that and possibly put some dollars into that to put new infrastructure in. So functionally obsolete use, that's going to be a flag. Contamination, we know this, brownfield sites. New transportation infrastructure. If I'm building a new interchange, that's going to change the investment profile of the land around it. Or if I'm going to run pipe, utility, water, anything out there, it's going to change things. Or I'm going to build LRT in some communities, that's going to increase the density. Room for community growth, so this is a classic. We've got rural communities who are trying to grow the boundaries, do annexations, build roads. New value generated, available for general public purpose, that's a case where, and these tools allow you to, if I've got, let's say I have a $100 million investment in my community, and I go, you know what? I could abate or tax part of that, or increment part of that new value to help pay for this interchange over here, so I can catalyze two other developments. So that's a concept to you. Look at a new investment opportunity and you go, boy, is there any way I can do something today? And then unhappy with existing land use controls and how they operate. I'll get into that in a second. So the themes here, and where I'm at, I'm, I'm a tip-of-the-spear guy, so I'm always looking back and making sure we go in the right way, we spend the resources, and we got a watercolor. We have a, basically, here's kind of what I want my community to look like. So we're going for these qualitative issues to quantitative. As a professional, an objective professional, I've got to reduce those to things that I can measure and compare. Form, so I got this, you know, picture of something, but it has to work, has to function. I'm a guy who put, you know, they wanted to put retail on a municipal parking ramp on the first floor, and they all thought Barnes &amp; Noble was going to show up as one tenant. So they shelled the space out as if it were a single tenant. Well, that's not the way the market worked down there. It was cut up. So you have to go from the watercolor to, where's the garbage going to be picked up? Uses? Lots of uses of the vision. Oh, we want this, that, and the other thing. How are we going to pay for it? Sources, and that's back to the tools. Costs? I got tons of costs. Value added is increment or abatement. Is there new value that's coming to my community that I can access to do, handle those costs? Consensus? Watercolors are easy. Decisions? They're hard. Because now, yeah, everybody, the trade-offs aren't there. That's a classic case in the Ford plant project I'm working on. Everybody wants clean energy, bike, pedestrian, all, everything in the bucket, but nobody has said one, two, three, four in priority. And that's decisions. And so you get this great vision, but now you have to decide which one happens first, because I guarantee you, there's not enough value available to do all the things you want to do. Need to define feasibility. These public-private partnership projects are not benchmarked on the stock exchange. Feasibility, private feasibility, a real estate investor will tell you, well, feasibility is something that I spend $10 on, and I get 15% return over 10 years in IRR. That's a feasible project. But when you're putting public dollars into it, you're trying to figure out what's, what's feasible with my dollars, community dollars with the private dollars. And then accounting for time, a lot of this vision, nothing happens simultaneously. These communities have been growing for 200 years. And so you have to be prepared that that's not going to happen overnight. This is something that we've used to try and, and I'm only putting it here as a prop, really, to help communities understand when they're talking about something that may not be material to the decision they're about to make. So a lot of times, you'll see people arguing over a cost that may be only 3% of the total project budget. And so what we've done here is, when we help people analyze projects, we go, you know, we have a bid on that project. So we actually have a contractor who said he will build X for $10. And we know that, certainly, that's a high confidence, and by the way, that cost is only 2% of the project. So it's not sensitive. So if that number's wrong, even though we know it's right, it's not going to mess up your project. Down here to low confidence, high sensitivity. The reason we do this is a lot of development requires land acquisition, and if you don't have the power of eminent domain to tell somebody else to tell you what that land's worth, you've got to negotiate with that property owner. And that's usually a very sensitive number. It's usually a big part of the project. So when somebody says, I'm going to buy that chunk of land over there and turn it into something, and they put together preliminary pro forma, that number is going to be red, because it's going to be very sensitive. Public purpose benefits, and now, this is mom and apple pie, Dave touched on it. This is what we see in communities. I would say leverage ratio is at the top, $1 to $10, like I said, but there's elements to that. So increased employment, you know, the type of jobs. A lot of, a lot of state universities will do studies about, you know, if I do med tech jobs, they have a higher velocity in this economy than if I do printing jobs. Why? Because I've got clusters of other businesses. This is off-the-shelf stuff. You can get this from INPLAN, the RIMS modeling. There are models out there that can say, if I do this type of job in, in this economy, it'll have this direct, indirect, and induced benefit. Added housing units. City of St. Paul, where I was, we did 5,000 units in five years. Why? Because we were trying to get our urban core, we wanted some rooftops to drive some retail in downtown. And so we had an initiative to increase market rate and also some affordable, but we really wanted to get residential population in our core. So that's another element that we've seen people say, hey, Tony, help me, help me out, figure out how I'm going to increase housing units. Attraction of visitors, this is the classic stadium, sports stadium, sports complex, museum, those types of things. So you know what? There's measurements for that, too. Again, where I'm looking at is, somebody's asking me to do something, and I'm trying to figure out how they want to spend and what they want to get out of it. So I'm looking for ways to make them quantitative results. Increased sales volume. Kansas and Missouri are real sales tax communities, so they're very motivated by sales tax. So they have, they get a percentage rebated back, so they're, they're retail-motivated when you see them growing their communities. Additional infrastructure, such as public parking improvements, which result in increased market value through the above. I'm an urban renewal guy, urban core. Most of the buildings in downtown St. Paul were built at the turn of the century with no parking. There were no cars. There was a transit system, but there was a trolley car. Those buildings are, are, don't function. I can't compete with the suburbs, because they can do an ocean of asphalt. And so you can see it down here, where some of the old infrastructure buildings have come down to do surface parking. And it's really hard to change, if you're a tweener community, to say, you know what? I'm going to spend $20,000 a stall on structured parking and stack it up and make it free. That's not sustainable. I mean, you have to be very strategic about how you do that. I mean, you have to be very strategic about how you do that. But that's kinda the thing, the municipal ramp to serve like an old main street. Elimination of negative or blighting influence affecting surrounding property, this is the classic urban renewal. Remember, these tools came about in nineteen forty-eight, I think, in West Virginia, and they were primarily in the urban area after they developed there to help remove blight and housing problems. So the tools are very focused on blight removal. That's how they gen- that's how they originated. And so there's some residual of that today as they modify them. But that's the classic case of, you know, I got row houses here with no plumbing. I gotta take it down. Strength of, so those were policy decisions. Those are things that were saying, does the community wanna get rid of the blight? Do they wanna help structure parking, whatever? Now here's the strength of opportunity. I would say these are professional. So this is where somebody has to give you an opinion, somebody, and you know it, but I'll, I'll give you an example of that in a second. So you have to know if the tool, if you have the statutory authority to use the tool, like tax increment, does it eligible? Does it work? Does my lawyer say it's a tool I can use? Market demand for the use developed. If it's a house, we all know this, we do on Zillow, we know in our neighborhoods, we know what houses sell for. You don't need to hire a market study or a market expert to tell you what, you know, four bedroom, two bath house is gonna sell for in my neighborhood, cause we know. We know the houses. That's, that's a market that we're pretty expert in. But if I'm building a mixed use with retail and grocery store on it, and I'm wondering whether I'm gonna have the sales per square foot to satisfy the debt and financial obligations, I might want somebody with an opinion on that. I want somebody else to give me an opinion on that, that I can say is sensitizing it. Site controlled qualified developer, this is a classic, does a guy own the land? Is it contaminated? Can I build on it? Who's doing that? You know, engineer guy, legal guy, is the developer got the financial capacity? Who's done a background check on him? Does he have the money? Is it available? Is he leveraging stuff up? Those are all kinda professional things that you might want somebody else to do. You might want somebody else to do it even if you can do it internally, because you might want that external letterhead. Healthy growing employer, I touched on this earlier, INPLAN, you can find this out, you can find out how employers are doing relative to their competition out there. You can use Dun &amp; Bradstreet, other things, they're not perfect, but they give you a sense if you're, you know, financing a buggy whip operation, or if you're, you know, it's the next, I don't wanna say the next Google, cause nobody can predict the next Google. But it's basically an industry that's got some performance and looks like it's growing. Extent to which the positive consequences outweigh the negative consequences. I would say that's professional, because risk takes some professional experience. I had a client once who was gonna take out six single family homes, they had the power of eminent domain, but what they didn't expect was grandma holding out, and grandma's a pretty compelling argument in front of the media, cause it's her father's father's house. So even though you can, you can, often politically, your community can't spend that political capital to do it. So you need somebody with some experience there to go, have you thought about that? Is that really necessary? The Kilo case, which is a famous eminent domain case where they allowed the taking of property, the irony in that case, you know, as an EcoDevo guy, you're like, okay, just cause you can, you shouldn't have done that one, because we're gonna get some blowback. They didn't even need the house they took down. It was, it wasn't even a parking lot, it was green space. So, you know, basically, about twenty-four states in this country rolled back eminent domain law, because one guy went too far. Probably the project will leverage additional private investment or spinoff investment. This is the classic catalyst, we hate this, the outside consultant hates it, hates this. You know, how am I gonna measure, if I take out blighted gas station and put in CVS, is it, you know, I'm not gonna be able to perfectly quantify that all the retail around it's gonna work. Those are really hard metrics to do, but it's a conversation that people always talk about, and you should have a plan to address it. Public cost, this is professional end policy. So existence of a financial gap, the amount of the difference between the total development cost and private market investment value. Again, I've taken license, I'm talking about real estate investment here, I'm not talking about businesses and everything else. You'd be surprised how many people don't know the difference between cost and value. They are not the same thing. You can spend a hundred dollars on something and it's only worth twenty-five. You can spend a hundred dollars on something and it's worth a hundred and twenty-five. They are the difference. There's a difference between cost and value. Simple example in, in, in real estate. Orphaned gas station site with tank in the bottom that's contaminated, nobody owns it. The land, if it was farmland and down, if it was clean, it's worth a hundred thousand dollars. But it's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty thousand to buy it, and then spend fifty thousand to pull the tank out, and then spend ten thousand to demolish the building. So you're spending two hundred thousand dollars for something that's a hundred thousand dollars. That's why these tax increment tools were developed in the first place, to pay for the blight and relocation of the existing user of the property. And they allowed you to say more than retail, they're allowed you to redirect that value added tax below it. So who's checking that? Are you looking at that? Is that a gap analysis? Is that something you want done? And that's professional policy, because some policymakers will say, you know what, I think I wanna, you know, I wanna limit how much I'm gonna pay into that gap. In absolute terms, the availability of public or philanthropic resources to fill the gap for a specific project. Developers or investors in your community, particularly if they're coming from out of state or out of town, don't know your financial limits. They really don't. They have, I've, we worked on Legoland and Lee Summit, grandiose, great vision, but the city didn't have the capacity to deliver everything that the developer thought they were gonna deliver. They said, well, they, they got this great vision here, I thought they must be ready to finance it. And the answer was no, they actually didn't understand how much, they didn't know the market side of it. So they didn't know how much you were gonna ask for. So when you're doing your economic development strategies, think about what your budget is. What's your limit? Would you ever put your levy behind something? Would you drain all the funds for X resource? Whatever. Be understand, understand what your capacity limits are to get it done. In relative terms, so that's absolute, and, and by the way, as the outside consultant, I don't know all the pots of money you have. And so when somebody says, well, what do you think? Can we find it? Can we afford that? I don't know, it depends. In relative terms, the amount of subsidy required for given project in contrast with the amounts provided for similar projects in the past. If everything's a catalyst, what's catalyzed? So this is a classic case with community. I gave X dollars to Y business to help them expand. Now, Z business has come along and they want X dollars, too. Are they the same? Are the outcomes the same? Am I consistent in applying it? Or is it different, because the job wages are higher, or they're getting rid of a blight, or they're doing other things? The precedent setting in community status, the people wanna know, why did you treat that differently? And so make sure that you can put that into quantitative terms. There may be qualitative reasons, but give some sense of what the quantitative aspects of that are. And that's not to say they're right or wrong. The other thing that may happen is you may have primed the pump, to use an old cliche, or you may have focused on a particular blighted area, and you said, that one I'm gonna put a lot of resources on, and then I'm gonna turn it down. After that, I'm reducing either suddenly or slowly the resources that are available to the project. Framing the approach, so I'm a, I'm a, I'm a generalist, there, I do the transactions, the details, but to me, it's always important to keep the mission framed where we're going. And so in this case, because states and cities have a variety of power, some communities have a lot of access to resource and a lot of economic development power, and some have very little. How much of this vision is gonna be implemented by the public and how much by the private? It's important, because the return on investment for public is different than the return on investment for the private. So if we're talking about real estate, and we use this so that people understand it, Price Waterhouse, Corpass, surveys, real estate investors around the country, and they pick, they'll tell you what their returns are, leveraged and unleveraged, they'll tell you what they're getting out there. And so you have something you can benchmark it on. It's not local, but it's some benchmark. And it isn't what your community is, because I guarantee you, when you're doing a project, you're not looking at fifteen percent return, you're looking at other things. This is also important, because some communities have the power to build vertical. The city of St. Paul, my old, my alma mater, I've been gone for eight years, they actually were the developer for a mixed use grocery store residential project market rate. So they actually went into the market, much to the consternation of a lot of investors, cause they didn't belong there. And they built a project, they're lucky, it's succeeding, and they're gonna sell it. But they, think of that. They had the ability, the authority, the statutory authority to enter into the marketplace and build a mixed use project in their downtown, was the old police station. So that's a lot. That's a lot of power, which is a lot of risk, and so you have to disclose what the possible downsides of that are. Prioritize public benefits outcomes and then start to apply a cost to them, start looking for fiscal values generated within the vision area. So this is a classic, guys who are in this business are classic sources and uses guys. So somebody says, I got this big cost and this big outcome I want, and the first thing we do is go, and where's the money coming from? Cause I wanna read, I wanna find out how much I can redirect it. And so that's, that's the guidance. Now this is a kind of a thing that's developed, cause there's different communities, there are different places. Private investor, the financial incentive approach, the community return on investment, your ROI can be qualitative as well as quantitative. So you do the, you, you do a museum, not because it's gonna cash flow and throw off a whole lot of direct revenue, it's got other quality of life issues to it. The needs are gap analysis, so that's, I guess the point of that is, sometimes I do things that the private market wouldn't do, because there's a community ROI in there. ROI, by the way, means return on investment. So what I was saying before about that dollar to that three dollar, and sometimes those returns are, people feel good. Needs or gap analysis approach is the developer's return on investment. So the first one is your community, an incentive, when I'm giving money to somebody to come here, I'm doing it because it helps my community. A needs or gap analysis is the developer's return. You're doing something because that contaminated tank was there, and he's not gonna buy it and clear it out and not make money on it. So the community has to step in and fill the gap if you want that development. So those are two different approaches to this. You need to understand what's driving the gap. So why is, why do you have to pull the tank out? Because it's orphaned. The guy who dumped it there isn't around anymore. Or because I have, my timeline's accelerated, I can't wait for it to clear out. And you still need to satisfy the statutory minimum. Some states, like the state of Missouri, requires a strict but-for analysis, so you have to actually do an IRR analysis on every time you use a tax increment deal. Community ROI, am I, am I, okay. I'll let you ask questions at the end of this, I wanna plow through it. Community ROI, so cost benefit or fiscal impact analysis, right? So if I add a job here, it has a direct tax benefit to my community, fills my bucket to do police and fire. It also has an indirect and induced, because he's shopping and doing other things, and he's inducing other people to be around it. Again, like I mentioned before, plenty of models to show you what's going on in your community. Another thing is, industrial property tends to cost government less than residential. And of course, that's intuitive, right? Residents require libraries, parks, and other things. Industrial, a truck route, you know, they're not catching on fire that much. So they're, different land uses cost government different things, too. So you have to remember that, even without incentive, and that's a fiscal impact analysis. We do a lot of these in Virginia, where they're talking about, like a developer will come in and say, hey, I see you guys got that zoned industrial, but I got a real demand for two thousand units of single family. Can you guys rezone that? And the city of, the city of Virginia will go, sure, if you pay us, the, the opportunity cost of converting that. And they actually do what they call proffers there, where they pay them to change that use. Why? Cause I gotta buy another fire station. These estimates of cost and benefits to each affected jurisdiction, so this is, Dave touched on this a little bit with scale, you know, there's different entities that are gonna pay and benefit more, school districts and counties and cities, and different taxing entities are affected differently by the type of investment in their community, and you should be aware of that, because there's legitimate issues when another taxing entity goes, whoa, 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 you guys are tracking my value in that tax increment, and I'm stuck with a tab. Can include direct, indirect, and induced, which I talked about. How do you use this analysis? Again, we're trying to, for policy for the community, the argument in policy of qualitative stuff can't be expertly outsourced, that's for your community to decide, but we can measure the quantitative stuff. So as soon as we can find terra firma on what's quantitative, then we can allow the policy debate to occur on the qualitative. Now the investor developer ROI, quantitative, needs or feasibility, the but-for that I touched on before. What a but-for test is, by the way, is some, an investor comes to the community and says, listen, I'd like to build a grocery store here, but there's this five hundred thousand dollar tank in the ground, and here's my development pro forma, I can't afford to pull the tank out. And so but for that tank cost, I would do this investment. And they show you the returns. Then you go back and you go, oh, well, you know what, we have a tool here that can affect that. That's for the investor gap analysis. It's a range, there's not a black and white on this, and you can negotiate your final details, but you still have to have a feasible project. This isn't efficient when a community is threatening to leave your town, because that's not, we had, we, 3M, for example, I will use a name, because this is always fun. We have some businesses that say, well, I'm going to Mexico. All right, well, I, okay, so now the budget is whatever keeps them from going to Mexico. And my joke is, I hope you don't kidnap, get kidnapped on your way to work. So there are certain things that are not reasonable requests by some of the applicants, so you really have to say, that's great, okay, let's stop posturing, and let's talk about what's really affecting your ability to grow in our community. Cause if it's general payroll tax that the state controls, I can't do anything about that. But if it's a road, or access, or something a municipality can do, I can do something about that. This is a classic, so I told you the two types of returns, the investor and the community. A blight curve, which is where TIF comes from, is a blending of both. It's a classic blending of both. Why? Because I have negative blight going on. My ROI is being negatively affected right now. My real estate taxes are declining, because there's blight, and it's dropping. But people forget in tax increment, when this tool originated, urban real estate was declining in value. So school district, county, and city are losing, cause real estate values are dropping. What the tool allowed you to do is say, ho, 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 hold everybody harmless, freeze it at that level going forward, and use the new value, if they have a grocery store or a business, that throws into the three taxing entities and allow you a term of time to grab it to remove the blight, and spend it on the demolition cleanup or whatever. So that's where the mild comes, and it's a cla- which is why it's a controversial tool, cause it's a classic blending of two efforts that you're trying to do, your community ROI and your gap. The, the private investor has a legitimate gap here. What role does your community wanna play? And I touched on this earlier, with the powers. I, I call them seller communities. Lee Summit is one, Malibu, I mean, communities where everybody wants to be and invest, and you can tell them what color to paint their house. Hey, if you don't wanna paint it pink, we're not gonna give you a permit. They're seller communities, they're great. Everybody wants to be there, they have, they have a demand problem. So you might just give them a permit. That's all I'm gonna do for my economic development strategy, all the way down to be the developer, which is where St. Paul was. And then these are shades of risk and role by your community. And that may change within your community. You may take more risk in industrial park development. Why? Because land, cause cities can be patient, you don't have equity investors to pay back, and you're controlling the infrastructure. So a lot of communities go out and buy a hundred acres of farmland, run utilities out to it, zone it, grade it, get it ready for when that opportunity guy drives down the highway and goes, oh, hey, that's a good site, you know, and plop it there. So they, that's a comfortable risk for a lot of communities to take. Some communities don't, because they don't have to do it. But that's a, that's a, that's a high risk. The other one is be the lender, where you're underwriting the deal yourself, you're guaranteeing it, or you're just reimbursing it. A lot of communities we have do, we call them Pago districts. So you build it, you put the grocery store there, and every year I come by and the jobs are in there, and the groceries are still selling, and I write you a check for your taxes back. If you don't have the jobs and the grocery store's not there, I'm keeping the check. You don't get it. That's a Pago. So that's a less risky operation, though they're still getting a benefit. What about returns for city accepting more risk? Like I said before, there's no published returns. I can't tell you, if you asked me, I could, I can give you war stories, I can tell you what people have done, but there's no standards out there on public-private blending of dollars. There's not published data out there that you can use. So you, I can't tell you what's a reasonable return for your community, you have to decide that. We expect local governments to negotiate desired outcomes, such as serre depreciation and risk mitigation, so you can do those Pago things, as I said before, if a project performs higher than expectations, that you get a quicker payback. Those are all things that your attorney would work out for you. Developer-investor negotiations, keep in mind that unlike public works project, where the public sector is comfortable with accepting the lowest responsible bidder, in economic development projects, public sector entities have to negotiate each deal. And part of that is, makes sense, cause it's usually a site, you don't have the commodity. You could do it this way, and we, and I've done it this way. You could say, I'd like to add a hundred units of housing mixed use project in my downtown, and I'm willing to use some entitlements. I'm taking offers until December. I'm taking offers until December. Somebody show up and tell me who has site control and say, 'Hey, I'll do it for, if you guys help me pay for this. I'll do it if you help me pay for that.'" But the reality is, that's not how it works. It's usually a particular business in a particular chunk of real estate, and you're stuck. You have to negotiate everything. You don't have the benefit of doing a bid, like you do for a construction project. City needs to understand the risk and cost benefit of comparable developments, and you have to agree on the price of those benefits. A consultant can't tell you the answer to that. I get this all the time. "Tony, what should I pay for that? What's, what, what should I pay for that apple?" Well, I can tell you what apples are trading at, I can say, "Well, here's what retail returns are generally, or industrial returns are generally, but how bad do you want the apple? How hungry are you? Do you care? Do you really want to count the guy, that guy's money? Or do you know what you're getting out of the project? I don't want to count his money." Like I said before, if you get your community benefits, if you get everything you want, and he gets rich, what's wrong with that? That's great, that's a win-win. But if you feel like you were getting asked to take more, spend more money or more resources on something than you really wanted to, then you probably want to put a regulator on how rich he gets. Because you want to say, "Boy, if you really are successful, you know, you might have subordinate debt on something, then I really want to get paid back. I'd like to be, I'd like to share in that." But tell folks upfront that's what you're thinking about, you know, be transparent about that. How does this all relate to your economic development vision and plan? This is kind of a practices issue. So determine upfront a complete development plan with detailed sources and uses. So you're going from watercolor vision, and you're gonna have to start populating that with time, cost, money, value, it's, you know, we call them development finance spreadsheet models. Boom, here's when this is happening, here's when this cost happens, oh, here's when value happens, and we start trapping that back. Every piece of information needs a responsible party providing it, and those that are estimates should be noted. If it's a curbside, you know, you don't have to spend a lot of money on consultants until you're getting closer to the deal. If you just want to guest them at the back of the napkin, that's fine. Just understand that that's all it is, that it could change, and back to that color graphic I had before, it could be a real sensitive number. But that's all right, because we're just trying to populate where we're going. But make sure somebody owns it. I had a mentor of mine for years, had two rules in this business. Tell the truth, and sign your work. Sign your work. If it's not your work, don't sign it. Don't say it's your work and it's somebody else's work. Identify whose it is. Before making a resource commitment, the best available information should be provided in a manner that's consistent and comparable. This business is all about comps. It's all about the comps. So get uncomfortable asking people to say, "Look, this is the way we would do it in my community. I need you to give me this information, and if you think that's confidential, then I'm not giving you nickel." Or if you've got some personal private activity that's occurring, and this is by the investor that's coming to you, you can set up ways to review that information without making that public. But at the end of the day, as a community, we want to make sure that we're not giving money to some guy who's going to Malibu. The level of detail required will be a function of the level of risk that the community is willing to take, and that, again, is intuitive. If I'm just giving a guy a permit to build a garage, I'm not gonna look for his financials, I'm not gonna even find out, you know, what bank he's using to get a loan to build the garage. I don't really care, so I'm not gonna do a bunch of due diligence. But if a guy's coming to me and says, "Tony, if you can build my $30,000 garage, I'm gonna put a quilting operation in there, and I'm gonna pay you back with this rent over 10 years, oh, and by the way, I gotta put a personal guarantee on it." Well, then I'm gonna go, "Okay, where's the personal guarantee come from? How much, what assets do you have? Is the quilting operation ever sold anything before?" Your level of due diligence when you're fronting money is gonna increase, and it's a straight line like that, and there's every project in between. And so don't spend too much money on guy, a suit from St. Paul, to help you answer a question you may already know. But as you get further into the deal, then you're gonna want to look for somebody to, to tell you whether it's the truth. That's it. Either that, or it's died again. So anyway, I know that's a lot, and it's a plow through, and we do this presentation to different communities and different organizations, and it's kind of a best practice of, we sort of pulled out of what we've observed different communities doing, and what we would like to see them do more of. I'm gonna open it up to questions, or observations, or critiques.
Tony, I'll start. Something that we struggled with a lot, and, and the way that this presentation was kind of presented and sold, was TIF as a tool. Why use it? Is it good? Is it bad? What happens to, we TIF an area, and then all of the, the new revenue is lost for 20 years. So we, we create an area that needs new fire protection, new police protection, new all of this stuff, and we're not getting paid for it, because we used TIF money to do it in the first place. What's your position on that?
So, the, the genesis of the tax increment was that, without addressing the reasons for the, the gap, was there would be no taxes. So that incremental value's not occurring but for that guy's investment. So if you prove that you needed that investment, if there was an underwriting of that that said, "Yeah, he had the contaminated site, and but for the tax increment, the investment wouldn't occur." That's the purest, that's the simplest analysis. There's no robbing of the other taxing entities, because either the property continues to decline, and they're losing their value, or at a minimum, flatlines. That's the original TIF. Now, today, there are a lot of, state laws have changed to allow tax increment to be used, not even in, not just for blight, but for economic development. And in that case, you're assuming that if I add 100 jobs of med tech into my community, I know what my community ROI is, I'm getting this new tax base, I'm trying to keep it from going somewhere else, Illinois or whatever, and I'm gonna use that tax, I can use all of it or part of it, and I'm getting the benefits from those jobs. So there is a, there is a quantitative metrics to that, that you can measure. So the, the simple answer is, it's only affecting the other taxing entities if you think and believe that the investment would occur whether you did anything or not. So if you think that it would have happened without an incentive, then yeah, then you're taking the taxes from the other entities. But if you think it won't happen without your incentive, then you're not robbing anybody, because it's not gonna occur.
Okay, so a follow-up question to that, then, is, historically, would that development happen without incentives, across the country? I mean, not just Waterloo, but in Minneapolis, and St. Paul, and all the other places you work.
Right.
Are we in a position where cities are expected to give incentives?
There is some of that. I mean, there's no doubt that there's, there's trolling around and competing with communities going on, or somebody will say, "Well, I'm gonna, I can get this down the road." I, I, it's hard to prove a negative. So it's hard to say, you know, Shutterfly in Shakopee, which Dave talked about before, would Shutterfly have built a new expansion facility somewhere in the country? Absolutely. Would they have built it in Shakopee? Not if they couldn't have gotten the road there and the fiber optic there. How did the road and fiber optic get there? Tax increment was used to build the infrastructure to get there. So they may have gone somewhere else to do it. It's a fair question, it's a policy question, there isn't a simple answer to it. Sometimes it's, you know, the, the joke I make in this industry is, we're sort of, we've got the, we have purists on both sides. We have sort of the Ron Paul libertarian, picking winners and losers, you shouldn't do it at all. And then you have progressive liberal that says, "It's corporate subsidy." So you have, you have two kind of perspectives that are pushing the debate, and the reality is, in this business, it's a compromise, it's gray, and there's not a perfect answer. And that's all I could say. I mean, I, it's, you know, you can say that there's a blighted downtown, you have to remove the blight, or sometimes you have to make confident the investment, you know, they might say, "Jeez, I don't know. That's a risky place to invest, you guys don't have the rooftops, you know, I need some help to take that risk." And it's a judgment call.
When, when a city decides to set up TIFs, is there some formula they should be looking at, money-wise, as far as the amount of money that's already gone in the indebtedness of the city, and the kind of income of that, and how much money they can afford to put into TIFs? I mean, it seems like sometimes we have a lot of TIFs all over, and they'll sometimes create a TIF for one property. But we leave the TIF in place because it's got to pay off the debt within it, and they have to have a structure for if somebody else wants in it. But is, is there a plan that a city should think about, how much money they can tip? Because you know, as, as the salaries and the expenses go up, if you're not getting any revenue from your TIFs, the only thing you can do is go back to the existing tax base, and it gets to be a burden after a while, I believe, as residential people would say. But what's your thinking there?
I, I think it's a good idea. We used to have a rule of thumb, a, again, it's local, it really depends on what your situation is, so there isn't a right or wrong on this, but I think, we used to have a rule of thumb that generally, 10% of our tax capacity in St. Paul, we wouldn't want to exceed that. Statutorily, we could, but generally, we thought, "We should keep in line on this." Now, that's a fluctuating number, because districts decertify, property, you know, lots of changes, and that's not blanket. I mean, there's some cities that urban renewal is a huge problem. I mean, Detroit, that's a very different issue than Waterloo, than St. Paul. So, I, I, there isn't a right or wrong, but I do think you should be considering, what's the limit? You know, having that conversation. I will tell you, as a practitioner, the risk I always consider, you want flexibility, you want to be able to say, "Jeez, I don't want to create a new district. If I could trap some of this existing revenue stream to solve this problem, that's a better solution than creating a whole new structure." So as a practitioner, I want flexibility. But I, but I want to be, and the quid pro quo for that is, I have to disclose what I think the limits are. So I know that's not complete, direct answer, but it's...
Well, a follow-up is that originally, TIFs were brought about as a way to redevelop, like, rast pack fields, you know, fields that were protected. We now are using TIFs in some of our best, most desirable areas. Now, how did we get so far afield in the use of something that's just an economic thing that robs the city of income?
You know, again, it, that could be where you are. Shutterfly in Shakopee, for example, was, it's pretty much, it's cornfield, it's valuable property, but they had built some infrastructure there, and they want to make sure that they don't have to replicate infrastructure somewhere else. So what may perceive to be a high-value part of the community that doesn't need any help, may actually be something that's just sort of closing the deal, to make sure you're maximizing the utilities you have there, the roadway you have there. But yeah, I mean, it, 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 it's so hard to say, because I don't know all the choices you're facing. So if you have, you know, if I were king for a day, and I walked in, I said, "Boy, that blighted thing over there that's been vacant for 40 years is my number-one priority, I'll do whatever it takes to get that out of there, and then the rest will happen if I have the resources." But unless I, without any context of knowing what your choices are, that could be completely reasonable, plus you're adding the jobs. And, and there is an element of this, of making sure that the investment community out there, and the job growth people out there, think that that community knows what they want, and they're helping, they're helping investment occur. So there is a little bit of qualitative in there that I wouldn't, I'd be, I wouldn't judge, because that's really what your community needs. It's not just the numbers. I come at it from numbers, because that's what, like, people hire me to do, but it's like buying the apple. I can't tell you how badly you want it. If your community says, "Boy, these jobs are really important, we should use that tool."
Yes. Here in Waterloo, we TIF, 100% of the TIF was in the TIF, nothing goes to the residents, or, you know, to take care of things like police and fire. But each time the city grows, those things require police and fire, and roads clearing and everything. So those of us who are left, who aren't getting TIF dollars, aren't paying for those loads, downtown, we've had it over 50 years, TIFs downtown, they are still not paying for police and fire. And in this town, we need police and fire more than anything. They keep, they fight for the budget every year, because they want more police money, we want to pay them more, we gotta do all this. Yet, we've got all these, I won't use the word, all these TIF people that are growing in their wealth, and they're not helping us, the taxpayers are not helping the general wealth.
I, it's, it's a fair question about how you arrive at a consensus. I, I would be careful about fixating on the tool. If, if you, regardless of how much was in a TIF, if you spent a million dollars to pull out contamination and build a road network into a site, that was going from $10,000 in property taxes a year, down to nine, down to eight, down to six, if, because I don't know any of the details of what you just said, but if I spent a million dollars to pull out contamination, build in roadwork, and Shutterfly came along and said, "They're gonna continue to pay that $10,000 in taxes, but the taxes for the next 10 years that they would, that they're paying, they're still writing a check for the taxes, by the way, the city is redirecting it to pay for its roadwork, and pay for that contamination." I would say that's a good deal, regardless of whether Shutterfly got rich. It matters what you spend the increment on. If, would anybody complain if I spent the tax increment on, you can't, in some states, on a new police station? So if I said, "Listen, we're gonna add 1,000 units of housing, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna create a tax increment district to pay for the contamination, put the roadwork in, and build a police station," you wouldn't object. So it matters what you spend the increment on. And a lot of times, what we forget when we do these projects is, we've actually spent it on some legitimate costs. Now, there's some incentive in there, sometimes we write land down to a dollar, and then you go, "Well, why did I do that?" Because you might be caught in the matrix here of industrial sites, for example, where communities are financing industrial growth that way, they're giving land away, or they're making land, they're appreciating it over time. So that's a competitive issue, that, that's the marketplace. You don't have to do it. All of this stuff is discretionary. You could just put your hands in your pocket, say, "Well, I'm not gonna give land away." And, you know, there'll be a consequence to that. Not necessarily a bad one, but it'll be, it'll be a different outcome.
Do cities typically keep 100% of the increment, or the average?
They can do it different ways. So we have...
I know, you work a lot, so...
Yeah.
What are your cities?
I, I'll give you an example. We're doing a project right now, Amazon is coming to Savage, I think it's, no, Shakopee, and the county, Hizzle, Hunts, needs, they're building road infrastructure that they have to do, it's a county road, to service the area, and this project is creating growth faster than what their CIP was, their five-year plan. So the county's coming in and saying, "We need a portion of that tax increment to help pay for this road, it's an eligible cost, and the city's ready to give it to them." But then the city has to turn around to amazon.com and say, "By the way, your project is creating a roof for this highway, is interchange this roadwork, and the county's not gonna pay for it out of their CIB, they want some of the increment, which means your guys are gonna get less on yours." And if Amazon, they're taking a risk. If Amazon says, "Yeah, that's fine, we'll do that, because we get a benefit from the road." Or if they go, if they hold their breath, stomp their feet, and walk out and say, "We're going over to Savage," Savage will have the same issue. So we have, we are working with clients all the time about how they share those revenue streams. And some of it may not be going to them directly, some of them may be paying for costs that would otherwise be paid for by that taxing entity. School districts in St., in Minnesota, we do, we have abatement districts. In Woodbury, we had a three tax, you could do a TIF or you could do an abatement. And the three taxing entities, the school district, the county, and the city got together and said, "We want to build an interchange over here by Lake Elmo." The school district wanted it, because their buses were running all over the place, they go, "Heck, you guys, if we do that, that really could help us in our bus garage, we're willing to forego our taxes for eight years." So there are tools to do it. Yeah, Dave?
Explain the difference between an abatement, what's an abatement?
Abatement, it's, it's like, in Minnesota, it's a hybrid TIF. So it doesn't have the same blight rule or but-for analysis, but it basically allows, you have to, you have to agree to it. It allows the local government to allow the new tax value to be redirected to a project, and the three of them can get together. That sort of avoids the scenario where a tax increment basically boxes out the other taxing entities. They get to vote on it.
Have you found that communities that are close to one another are more of one over businesses?
Yeah. Less so, we, we had a, we had an informal agreement with Minneapolis that we wouldn't cannibalize our businesses. Back to what Dave, and I think that's really been a phenomenon in the last 10 years, where people go, "Hold it, hold it. Look." You know, you call the county manager or the manager of the other city, and you go, "Such-and-such is over here shopping around, looking for a place. I don't want to drain the pool to move him over here." They may only need a little bit of dollars to grow in your community. And if you get the chamber commerce guy, the board's, you know, not shouting at you for losing something, you say, "We're trying to be fiscally responsible here, and if it's in Minneapolis or St. Paul, the job, that, nobody's gonna sell their house and move if it goes from one side to the other. It might if it goes further away." So we do have informal, where they don't work, is Kansas City and the unified government of Kansas. Missouri and Kansas border, the state ones are tougher. You guys are a little further from Illinois, but those battles are, are bigger, because the incentives are different. You know, the, the beneficiaries are different. In Minnesota, if it's in St. Paul and Minneapolis, I'm pretty sure that the State Department of Economic Development's not gonna give incentives, because the payroll tax, you know, more than they would need, because they get the benefit of the payroll taxes wherever they are. So they don't want to see cannibalization, neither do counties. Counties hate this stuff, where they're going from one side of the county to the other side of the county. So there's a common interest there, and we've seen it, but it's really hard on those interstate issues. They're just, they're, they're really hard.
That's not what I was gonna talk about, but in speaking to that, I read in the paper the other day, where Akron and Iowa Falls are fighting over a nursing home move, and then according to the paper, there was a law, state law put into effect in 2012, that Iowa cities cannot do that. So I just want to make that count. The other thing you talked about was, a dollar of public money creates $10 of private value, but when it takes 10 to 20 years for us to see that value, because they keep rolling it back into another TIF, where's the advantage they have in the TIF for us? It seems to me like it's never any rollover that never, as my understanding originally about the TIF was to help the taxpayers get a little tax relief. And when they keep rolling it back into another TIF, which I asked a question one time in a council meeting, are the present TIF areas full? And I didn't get an answer, but anyway. Then they create another new TIF area, taking this TIF money to roll into that TIF area. And then they say, well, this TIF, if you're gonna pay for that TIF, it's just a, it's a money game of back and forth that never gives us any tax relief. I've lived here since 2009 and my tax has gone up $600. And they're gonna go up again and to up?
Yeah. I, I appreciate and respect the comment. I, what I would be reluctant to do is as, as somebody who has had to try and find the most cost-effective way to serve public purpose, I would not judge the way people are moving resources around because there could be a very good reason that's occurring. Or the evergreening of TIFs. That happened in California where they trapped it in perpetuity. And there are, there'll be reactions to that. State law governs that and it'll change that. In Minnesota, there's been a lot of ratcheting back. So the ability to create a TIF has a higher threshold and, and they have to be partially unique. They don't have quite the broad area that they did. We call them pre-90 districts. And that's part of your community conversation. I, you know, I wouldn't judge one way or the other because I'm not managing it. But it's part of what you have to say. If that's a concern, then you have to get this back to where Dave was and say, we wanna limit this, we wanna put a budget on this. I would recommend that you do it less about the tool and more about the, the total economic pie that you've got. How much of your new growth, your new tax value, are you willing to trap and redirect at urban renewal or leveraging new dollars? As opposed to TIF. Step away from the tool for a second and just talk about, you know, any business would do this. Yeah, I think I'll put about 10% into R and D or whatever it is. Think of that, think of it that way and then the tool will do it.
And can we, I think it's good to remind us ourselves that the tax value, we only do that because we assume value is either gonna stay flat or go down.
Right.
That increment without incentives, we don't believe would exist.
Right.
So it isn't that we're putting money over here in this pot because we don't wanna use it. We're putting money in this pot to get more.
Right.
And to get jobs and bring people that leverage all the other things that happen.
Yeah, I, I, that's exactly right. I mean, the, somebody is determining here that this value is, but isn't gonna occur. So there's nothing to grab unless this investment occurs. And I went through a variety of ways you can verify that or at least talk about that. But I think that's right. We're not, if we did nothing, we're assuming that property taxes are flatter declining and they're only appreciating in value. So that new capital investment in the community on a property tax basis wouldn't be there without some behavior of the city, financial behavior of the city. I think that's the assumption.
Just to clarify that just a little bit, I think some of the public or the citizens frustrations is Waterloo generally and, and values are not growing. And every, every new home is tax abated and every new commercial is in a TIF. So as expenses keep going and going up, you know, there's no growth in our tax base. And so it's frustrating for the public. You said that you didn't like cities to make rule, cities shouldn't make rules that hem them in. But do cities typically have parameters like, um, we don't incentiv retail businesses? And, uh, some of ours get 20 years, some get tax, tax rebates and then they get cash for the land. Nobody, but it seems to get bigger and better all, all the time. I think the last one we got was, said that if anybody else got a better deal than he did down the road, it would all get renegotiated and he would get everything that everybody else got. So what, do cities set any parameters on what they might be willing to give?
They do. And I should qualify what I said before. As a practitioner, as a guy who used to be responsible for doing economic development, and I, I go to finance directors meetings, by the way, and I start off with apologizing for being my business. Because it, I mean, let's face it, it's a complicated and you're co-mingling public dollars with private dollars. It's a tough business. So as a practitioner, I always want all the elbow room I can get. Because I'm thinking I'm the smartest guy in the room. I'm gonna frickin' solve that problem. But, but the reality is that you can have rules. I would be careful about cross-the-board rules. And I'll give you an example. You may say, and there are communities that do this, I'll never do a retail project. I'll never incentivize a retail project. But I got this downtown riverfront project that is kind of a destination place or a Main Street project. You guys have a lot of vacant Main Street retail around here. And that's functionally obsolete property. It's not Target. So it requires, it's a boutique kind of thing. You have to have the sales per square foot and that kind of stuff. But you might find yourself going, geez, if I could just put together a facade program or something like that to help it kickstart it, that I might make an exception for. So back to what I was saying before, you know, what are the rules that you wanna apply to situations? And be careful about cross-the-board because you might find yourself making an exception. Now, you can always do that, by the way. There are a lot of communities that say, here's my 10 commandments. If you have something that's, I might be willing to waive those, talk to me. I don't wanna say no. But then you risk jeopardizing the private sector. They're looking at you trying to figure out, you know, what do these guys do? Are they willing to do that kind of thing or they know they're? And so you might, people might not interact with you if they think you have a categorical rule never to do something.
Just unmask you. One of the things that I suggest people do often is, is compare yourself to who your competitors are. You may say, well, we're a city government, we don't have competitors. We actually do have competitors, not like, you know, I could go to get a checking account at this bank or that bank. But if, if a business at the macro level is gonna come to Waterloo and you know, or they've applied that they're also gonna look someplace else, where would they go? And so let me give you kind of three examples. One, is your downtown, is your unique, your downtown. So if this one wants to come to downtown Waterloo and all likelihood it's not going to downtown to be downtown Cedar Rapids. You know, so the conversation about downtown is gonna be uniquely distinct to Waterloo. But if you got a greenfield or an ag land or you're neighboring, I forgot the name of the city, the gentleman, Evansdale or Cedar Falls, and we're gonna put a new grocery store up and I can either put it on this side of the road and that side is Evansdale or that side of the road is Cedar Falls, you know, what are those two cities doing even compared to what Waterloo's gonna do? So a good study in contrast is to research who you think your competitors are, not just your neighbors, but your macro competitors and find out what they're doing. You know, it doesn't drive local policy per se, but it should impact your policy discussion. Because if your main competitors are doing things that you may not wanna do, but they're being more aggressive, then maybe you have to be more aggressive. If your main competitors are less aggressive or not doing some stuff, maybe in theory or in principle, you could be less aggressive. So part of the decision you have to make at a local policy level is what your neighbors and your competitors are doing. And it's important to know what that is. You know, it won't ultimately drive your vote per se, but if you know that they're doing something you're not, in all likelihood, as a trend, you can track where that growth is gonna be and it might not be in your city. Or it might be in your city depending on what you do and how you react to that competition. And I think that's important policy and important practical. The question to ask is, what's a competition doing? And are we keeping up with the case? Or are we exceeding them or are we behind them? And you can track that over job growth, economic growth, value growth, tax breaks growth, et cetera.
I, I just wanna give a quick example of why categorical rules, be careful with them. And also why tax increment, if you focus too much on the tool, what you might miss. In the, in the city of downtown St. Paul, we had a problem. We had 22% vacancy in our office market. Most of it was because it was turn of the century, Class C office building. But it was 22% vacancy. That's a big vacancy for office market. And we were losing, those building owners were gonna come in and abate their taxes. They were challenging their assessments. They're coming in going, I'm empty. You guys are carrying too much value. I'm declining it. We weren't able to create a tax increment district to solve that problem. But we're a city of 290,000 people. We had enough resources, dollars of CDBG and general fund and other dollars that were flexible, that we said, look, it's about 300 square feet per employee, per office, and it's about a buck a square foot of taxes. Let's create a program where we'll give up to $3,000 a job, up to, no more, $3,000 a job to companies who wanna move into our downtown to occupy those spaces. And we will reward them. A fast-growing, high-wage, high-exporting company gets $3,000. A medium company, maybe not as high wage, gets less, 2,000 down to 1,000. And the idea was, we could do nothing and let the building owners come at us and reduce the taxes and then, and have lower tax value. Or we could take some flexible dollars. We budgeted for this now. We only said, you know, it's a pilot, we're gonna do it for a year. We're gonna plug it with $750,000. And we're gonna, and not gonna pick building owners. Businesses can come in and they'll say, hey, listen, I would, I like that incentive program. I'm gonna relocate into your downtown. I'll occupy that building over there. And they can use the dollars, they have to use the dollars on capital costs. They can't use it, you know, they have to build, you know, parking or TIs or something in the building to increase the value. And it moved. We helped address the problem, but it wasn't a silver bullet. Existing businesses came in and said, wait a minute, wait a minute. How come we don't get dollars to stay in the downtown? It's a legitimate question. Why? Because I don't have a silver bullet for every problem. And you know what? Your guy's worker experience in downtown is better if we have more people down here shopping at the restaurant so that he can cash flow and you can have a lunchtime experience. Because if we keep losing people, you know, the blue ribbon is gonna close because she can't make it. And so there is a component of this that can't be broad brush, can't solve all problems. But it was a specific thing that we were trying to turn the needle on and we knew we were gonna get hit. We used all the program dollars and then we stopped. Because we said, you know what? It, we, it became too cumbersome policy-wise to do. But it worked for a little while. We attracted Microsoft into downtown. We attracted, um, some other med tech companies down there. Some of the younger people who wanted to work, live in those or work in those old type building restorations. But it wasn't a TIF, but I had the luxury of a general fund flexible dollar. The nice thing about tax increment is that you're not spending somebody's existing dollars. You're spending that new dollar that's coming to your community. So it doesn't, it's, it's less hard. That, oh, yep.
Does federal state government or who determines what TIF monies can be used?
State.
State determines that. Do realities have any say in that? Do they have any way that they?
You can exceed state standards. So you can have, so you have the baseline is the state. And if you wanna add more criteria to it in addition to the state, you can limit. Correct.
Okay, so are there things specifically that TIF cannot, TIF monies cannot be used?
I'm not enough of an expert in, in Iowa TIF. In Minnesota, there is a long list of things that you can't use tax increment for and that you can't, that you can and can't. So you can't use it for vertical private investments. You can use it for land write-down, structured parking, cleanup. I'm not familiar enough with Iowa. I don't practice down here that I could tell you what the Iowa limits are. But they tend to be, the genesis of them tend to be removing barriers to investment. Or that EcoDevo district, which is the jobs addition.
Or adding value to the district?
Yeah. So, or land, very rarely, I mean, if you're issuing debt on these things, you have a taxable, tax-exempt problem. So you're not gonna, often you're not building the private building. You're building roadwork or writing down land or things like assembling parcels. So those are traditional TIF costs. And then there's so, more liberal states allow you to do more things like the city of St. Paul doing vertical.
And is there a difference between BLIT, TIF and urban?
There is here.
When it comes to that?
Yes. On the uses too? Yeah, they're pretty flexible here, aren't they? Yeah. But that's a good, I mean, that's a case, you'll get some communities that'll say, you know what? I'm willing to write down land to market value but not to zero. Or some communities will say, no, I'm okay with land write-down, but I don't wanna spend it on the vertical construction or, you know, private things, private ramps. I'll be doing municipal ramp, but I won't do a private ramp, those types of things. And those are local discussions that are had in a lot of communities. They, they have those policies. You could. Yes.
But if it's a general fund, you can say 10%?
Here's, yes, you can. I, I, here's the rule and I wanna be careful with the finance director and this is sort of the game. We always use our hardest-to-use money on the hardest-to-use things. So you want to, your general fund, which can pay for a lot of things, you want to always protect that money so that I can do police, fire and everything else. If I have a specific project that's complicated costs, like an affordable housing project, I'm gonna run away from general fund of that. I wanna use federal tax credit. I'll use somebody else's money for that. Or BLIT cleanup money or contamination money or tax increment money because it's new value added and it stays out of the general fund. So you're thinking about that from this side. I always look at it this way. I, I wanna protect that, the flexible dollars as much as I can and force my projects to use the hard-to-use dollars first. And then if I have to troll into things that might be available to build a rec center, then you have a conversation with the finance director and everybody else. What are, what are the opportunity costs of doing this? It's a good question and that's exactly the debate a lot of people have.
Yes. One of our newest TIF projects had a lot of things different than in the past that already built and grown when they approved the TIF. So, and on top of that, they said, now, we've got X amount of acres and we're gonna use this amount. Now, if we wanna tip the rest of it, we want you to give us permission to give us the same TIF deal that you just gave us on this property. And they also said, if anyone else negotiates a better TIF than we got, we want that same opportunity. Did you see that in the city?
Yeah. It, that, it happens a lot and I, and I'll be, um, I don't wanna name names on this one. I will. So we had, but it's, it's, it's actually really interesting and important. We had a major, major employer in one of our communities. And the governor had announced that he was supporting the entitlements to flow to this community. Every elected official supported this community. It was, we're talking thousands of jobs, high-wage jobs. The consequence of the tool being available, a tax increment, the value added that this company brought was the best tool for the public to use. Otherwise, they would've had to raise the levy. And my job is to make sure that the community is using the least cost for the highest public benefit. So I want to use the guy who everybody's paying to stay in town. I want his tax value for the community's tax value. And so the, the, in that case, they had already started the project moving. And, but it was absolutely paramount for the fiscal health of the community that the tool be available to do it. And that the, the investor be responsible for that flow. So it's a little different take on what, I know what you're saying. And I, as a guy on the outside, you know, a lot of times we read stuff in the paper, we go, but I wasn't there in the trenches. I've been in the trenches and, you know, you're just going, God, yeah. You know, if I'd framed the issue better, I wouldn't be where I am now. Or they don't understand what's going on here. We actually did something better and you can't, it's hard, I can't judge that. You know what I mean? But. And I will say this, Eco, you're an EcoDevo guy. EcoDevo guys, at least we, this, this is a joke and I know finance directors know this all the time. So the parks guy always shows up and he wants to add another rec center. And the fire station guys show up and they wanna add another fire station. Library guys show up. Everybody, every department wants to expand their infrastructure and realm. And that's good. They, you know, they're trying to grow the community. But they always go to the general fund. The EcoDevo guy has to pay his own way, right? This is, I'm just having a little fun here. You know, I don't get anything. I didn't know tax revenue for my project unless they actually come and spend money in my community. So the joke I used to have, and again, I'm playing the bad guy again. The EcoDevo guy, you know, I wanna do, add 1,000 jobs in my downtown manufacturing. And the finance director goes, you know, with what? And I go, hey, let me show you. Here's the tool and here's the taxes that are coming in. And then she's gonna go, okay, I could see that. I could see that. But then you really, you do have to keep an eye on the cost of government issue, which you guys have all talked about. How is that working out? Are we in balance on that? Because like you say, well, and you don't, and there's opinions obviously vary on this. But ostensibly you would say, yeah, but it wouldn't happen. There would be no police and fire there. But that's the debate to have. And as a guy who, I mean, the joke is I always have is library guys go to the general fund or in the CIB, EcoDevo guys show up with a check. No, granted, it's not our check. I think that's it. I'm exhausted, you guys. I apologize. One, one more.
Of course, and sort of a difference, or by the way, I think in many ways, we're real close to the highest property tax, uh, level. We're approximately 30% cost higher in the business. It's a lot easier compared to our neighbor Mexico or the Dallas. And how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you come to that? Uh, we're not, we don't have a lot of money. We're very high in funding this, uh, support of lunch. And we keep making the money, probably just to be reinvested in the treasury by putting we sell it. Because every year our taxes, our expenses for our help, uh, for our city is up to, we're operating the money out of the budget, the balance.
I, that is the- I, that is the challenge that I had 15 years ago in downtown St. Paul. Declining values, cost of government going up. And you're, I mean, and I don't mean, I mean, when I'm joking about that, I don't mean to be glib because these are really serious issues and different communities are different ways. Some people can expand their boundaries and, and annex and create more value. Some people, some communities are faced with cutting costs, just keep cutting costs, or do I reinvest in something? And I think that's what this is. It, it, and, and it's, it's a simplistic analogy. But if you have a, a city is like a mall, a shopping mall. It has the mall cops, it has to keep the thing clean, and it's got a bunch of tenants that are everything and locating. The difference between a mall and a city is the mall owner owns all the stores. And so he can say, CVS goes there, nail shop goes there. Our communities have evolved over time. And sometimes where the CVS is, no longer has foot traffic. We have, and even the mall guy is going to reinvest. He's going to tell his tenants and he's going to spend some money to freshen up the facade or do something in it. And so I think that's the real challenge with this topic. Is what's a reasonable amount of money to freshen up the shopping mall? Or try and attract new customers? And because we're not a real estate enterprise, we're not a REIT, we're a community of a lot of needs, you know, what Dave was touching on at the beginning here, the conversation getting to consensus is really tough. And I, I don't envy you. I, you know, and the other issue is, you know, what you'll find is that in distressed neighborhoods, there's a concern about gentrification. So from an economic development perspective, you're going, "Oh, my God, why is this community complaining about real estate value appreciation?" Because we're, we're crowding out their ability to afford to live there. And so it's not even, even if you get a consensus on reinvesting, there's some people that just want to be left alone. And it's, it's a hard conversation.
Do you ever see cities where they set up the defined tip and all of a sudden they're saying, "Okay, it's full. Where's the value from the general fund? This is full."
Yeah.
I think that, I think it's a little depressing for us that nothing, everything, we get more and more added and nothing ever gets completed. And so really, we never see any benefit.
You, you, absolutely, we do this study. There's a lot of communities that say, "You know what? I think I'm going to decertify that district and terminate it." Assuming there's outstanding debt is satisfied. You still have obligations because this is a continuing thing. But, you know, it's an exercise that's worth having about saying, "You know, what if we did this? What if we terminated this district? What happens?" And it, you'll see probably a marginal impact on your levy, on your property taxes. But, you know, people run those models all the time. If I stop collecting this money, what does it, it's $2 for homeowner or whatever it is. It's a good exercise to do. We used, we did, we did a similar one when they were doing LRT in St. Paul where we said, "Well, the nice thing about an existing TIF district for the market, by the way, is that if I could, I went up and get state law to continue a district longer to help make LRT fit into the community, sidewalk pedestrians and everything else." And we went to the legislature and we said, "You guys, if we can extend this TIF district, here's why it's good. Bondholders, the investors who are going to come in and borrow off this revenue stream, have an existing revenue stream that they can look at and go, "Oh, my God, that thing's been performing this way for the last 20 years. I'm comfortable with it." Versus a speculative new TIF where there's no history, bondholders are, are going to charge a premium to invest it. They're going to hire, there's going to be a higher interest rate. There'll be some shenanigans that are going on to bring money to it. So th- there are some good reasons to continue stuff because it performs. That being said, it's always a great exercise to find out, "What if I stopped? What happens to everything if I stop?" And I, and I think you can get fiscal impact modeling to show you what, what happens on that. It's not that hard. You guys, I feel like I'm putting half you to sleep. Thanks.
Yeah, I, let me just, uh, thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Tony, it's almost 6 o'clock, guys. Uh, thank you for coming, all of you. I, I hope it's been informational and educational for you. I, I know that's kind of heavy stuff sometimes, Tony. But, uh, Tony and David, thanks for coming down. Uh, thanks for being part of this and, uh, thank you guys for coming, all of you. Appreciate it.
Who's due a jury?
Do we have to?